Call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, November 6, 2017. 6:30 PM, City Council Room. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, Claire Turner, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item will be to approve the minutes of October 16, 2017. That ends the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the minute of 16, October, 2017.
Motion made, is there a second?
All seconded.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next item is comments by members of the public. And before we get into the comments, I just wanted to announce, Laura happened to put a picture up there, but I was in Montpelier Friday to accept the $25,000 grant check from the State of Vermont BGS spent on building and general services to support the development of the downtown recreation path. It will support the project's sustainability, develop local assets, and help promote our local recreational economy. This grant, we were awarded the maximum amount, one of the few communities to be awarded full $25,000, and it's going towards the Vista recreational path. And so, it comes via NCIC to help place some enhancements at the path, which I believe is not quite complete. They had to, because of the weather and the fall, they'll finish it up in the spring. But, yeah. Okay. Give you the fake check. Fake check. Other comments? I have Ann Schiolo who signed up to say something.
You've heard this from you before, but we've had a recent visit by Jim Condos talking about transparency, and at least two councilmen, John Wilson and Julie Reboyn, were there, and the room was packed. He was very clear that he thought it was best practice to allow the public to comment and ask questions on each agenda item as it came up. In addition to comments ahead, he thought we should be allowed to make comments as each agenda item comes up. And you know, it's going to be soon time for the budget to come around, and various people from the city will be making presentations, the police department, the fire department, and it seems highly foolish for you to allow them to present to only you for the public not to be able to ask the fire chief, the police department, the recreation department a single question, but have to wait until the next meeting, when they may not even be here, to comment or ask a question of the various members of the government. And so, as I've asked you before, and as Jim Condos pointed out, it's democratic. In Newport, it was traditional. It invites the public, it makes them feel welcome, it makes them think that you care about what we think. So I'm asking you to amend your rules and allow us to make a two-minute comment or question on each agenda item if we feel it's necessary. It may not even prove to be necessary. He pointed out that in South Burlington, they had 150 people sign up and gave them two minutes apiece. It took 300 minutes, but they thought that was fair, that the public should be allowed 300 minutes. Now, we never have 150 people show up, and most, we take up 10 minutes of your time, maybe 20 minutes if you allow us to make comments or ask questions during the meeting. And even the mayor pointed out last time that some of the questions that we asked about the water tower fleshed the issues out at least. They were good questions, they were good comments. So, I ask you as council members to think about amending your rules. If it doesn't happen tonight, you know I'll be around six months from now, asking for the same thing, because it's important, and it's democratic, and we want to be best practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to...
Well, you didn't give them a chance to even see if they wanted to make a motion or comment. Your city council members.
That was all their new business.
I didn't hear you.
New business.
No.
No.
I'm running the meeting. I asked, does the council have any comments or questions on it? If not, that would come under new business.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I don't wish to make a motion now or during new business, but I think it would be prudent to revise our meeting participation guidelines and think about the implications to the public, especially, as Ann pointed out, the upcoming budget setting session. So I would suggest that we take some time in the future to look at those guidelines and see if they work for us or not.
I think they work very well. I do, I think they work very well, and we're following the guidelines of many other communities in the state of Vermont, and it is working very well. And I'm following, I am not violating any law, the select board chair has the authority to set the guidelines for the meeting, I am considered the chair of the board, and I have set some guidelines. And if there's a vote on any item on the agenda, then the public comments. If it's a presentation to the council, it's a presentation to the council, because I want to remind everyone, this once again is a meeting of the elective body. To conduct council business, it's held in public. Public comments is standard at the beginning of the meeting. And that's all I'm going to say on that, and we'll move on. The next item is the AARP Walk Audit Results and NVDA Intersection Study Presentation. We have Mary Butler, Chair of the AARP Age Friendly, and we have Kelly Sotterpour from AARP, and we also have Doug Morton from NVDA. And so I guess I will let the, we'll have, hear from the AARP on the walk audit.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody. I'm Kelly Sotterpour, AARP Vermont, and I'm joined with my colleague and friend, Mary Butler, Chair of the Age Friendly Advisory Council. And I am Associate State Director for AARP. I oversee all of our local community work in Vermont, and I've been working with city council here since 2013, and members of the community on Newport's age-friendly designation. So Newport joined the network of age-friendly communities back in December 2013, so it's been about four years now, and this is a national network of designated communities that AARP manages. And we have, there's a network of about 200 communities across the country that are part of this age-friendly network. And I'm just going to provide a little bit of context about that, because I think it feeds into why we conducted the walk audit in the first place. When the city joins this network with the support from the mayor and with the members of city council, at the time, it was only 17 on the list, so it's really amazing to see how much this list has grown. There's eight domains of livability that are highlighted, and the first task that the advisory committee undertook was to conduct a household survey in Newport and then countywide to examine and hear from community members about where there's the most opportunity, where there's gaps, and where there's need in each of those livability indicators. And so, we put together an action report from there, which the city council approved of, and then we've been working as an advisory committee since then. And one of the domains of livability is called outdoor spaces and buildings, and that's where the walkability piece comes in. So, walkability is really important, not just for people's independence, for those people who are no longer able to drive. And just a quick stat, one in five older adults over the age of 65 no longer drives, one in five. AARP has long supported the ability for older adults to be able to age successfully in their home or in their community as long as possible, and we know that walking is the second preferred mode of transportation after driving their own car. So, walkability is important for independence, it's also good for public health, keeps us physically active, keeps us socially connected to our friends, to our neighbors, and to our family members, and it's good for economic vitality as well. And so, we headed out on June 1st. We had a lovely day actually, in a very rainy spring, and conducted the walk audit, and we looked at a couple of big pieces. We had two walks that went through Newport, and we looked at overall pedestrian safety, comfort, appeal, driver behavior, crosswalks, sidewalks, and we had a great, great amount of participation from community members, from city council members themselves, from city manager, from the hospital, and from the age-friendly action team as well. So, what the audit tool that we use was designed in collaboration with AARP National and with the Institute for Transportation Engineers. So these are people's observations. They rank everything from either poor to excellent. Newport fell in right in the middle. There's some really great assets in the community that make walking very enjoyable. You have a fantastic concentrated downtown area, but thinking about how that network and how people get around when they go and buy their groceries, and how to get home from there, right? So that's what we really wanted to be able to examine. And Mary's going to talk a little bit about the specific priorities that came out of the walk audit from all of the surveys that we were able to receive from people, from the participants. And I do want to just share that AARP has a funding amount of about $2,500 that can be used towards some of the smaller events. We really wanted to use this walk audit to find some small ways that we can be able to enhance the walkability, not these large grandiose like plans, right? We're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to suggest put a roundabout in an intersection, because that would take quite enough time and resources, but we want to be able to find some really simple solutions and fixes that can improve the access for people across the age spectrum. So I want to turn it over to Mary to talk a little bit about some of those priorities.
Well, thanks again for your participation in the walk. We, as Kelly said, it was a great day. We had two routes that we took. We had a route around downtown. We started at the library, and we went down to Main to Third, left on Prospect to Eastern, and down to Coventry, and back to Main. And then the other group took, we just went down Main Street, over the bridge, and we went to Vista. Turned around, did our grocery shopping, and we turned around and we came back. No, we didn't. So, we observed quite a few things, and as Kelly said, we found a lot of very positive things. But actually, our main priorities, we're thinking of the elderly and of parents with children, because we're, we say age-friendly, it's not just for seniors, it's for all ages. And so, in looking at what the opportunities are, we found, first of all, the stoplight at Coventry in Main has, is timed at 13 seconds, and we find it inadequate for people with walkers, canes, baby carriages, and things like that, or for slow ambulating, to get across in that period of time. So our first recommendation is that we would like to see that extended to 19 seconds, and we think that would give everybody plenty of time. The second is our pedestrian crosswalks, which we, some of them are very good, very well painted. You could see them well. What we noticed with motorists, I'm sorry, what we noticed with motorists is that some of them stop, slow down at the crosswalk, others just zoom right through. And so we thought, a couple things on them, more frequent repainting if possible, and then the other thing is signs that are near, right near the pedestrian crosswalk, so that if the motorists don't, aren't looking down, they're looking up, and they can see the sign that there is a crosswalk. We think the pedestrians would be safer if that were to happen. The third thing is that there weren't really, on the route to Vista, we didn't have any benches. There was no place to sit and rest, and if we have housing downtown and people want to go out, walk, and get their groceries, then they will often need to take a little bit of rest along the way. And if they take a rest, they might have a drink in their hand, maybe, a good drink, and they might need a trash barrel or a recycle bin. So those things go together. We understand from a preliminary meeting that we have some benches from before, and someone had the really good idea that maybe the committee members that we have on our task force could be the ones to approach the merchants, to say, "How do you feel about us having a bench in front of your business?" And we also learned that prior to our time now, that some of the merchants objected to the benches, mainly because they were facing into the business and they felt awkward being watched all day. So, that was one thing we learned in our preliminary meeting. The fourth recommendation that we have actually, didn't come from any of our routes, but it came from our observations as we drive in to Newport, that the Maple Fields corner is really a hazard. And so, while we're talking with you, what we'd like to recommend is that if there's any chance you could make that a four-way stop, we think we would save lives there, just from what we've seen. So, is, is, Mr. Mayor, would it be all right if I asked for anything to add from our committee members?
We have committee members here. Some of your committee members.
Does anybody have anything to add or say? Nope? Okay. All right. Thank you.
The benches now, yeah, I know there's a couple on the way, but they're not very visible. There's one right in Pomelo Park, so you really would see it walking down Main Street.
Yeah.
And there was another one, I think by Necker. Is there a bench? There is a bench there. Off the side. Those are the two, you're right, that are on the way down, and you're right, the benches, I hadn't been on the council very long, and the benches were very controversial. Merchants came in here on High and wanted them all removed. I don't know if you were on the council yet? You were just on the council, I think, and they wanted them all removed, and they were very adamant, and I hated to have the last bench removed. I was kind of a holdout, didn't want it removed, but we felt we should obligate the merchants at the time, but now's the time to approach them and see if we can put them back, because we do have some benches in storage, and maybe we can put some back along Main Street.
That'd be very helpful.
Yes. I think not even just for the people who are walking back from Vista with their grocery bags, which we observed quite a few people, but just the opportunity to be able to create some more vibrancy downtown, I think benches can really help with that, where people want to sit and linger, and they want to talk to friends, and hop into a store or whatnot. So I think that there's some real benefits from that. And I did also want to just recognize too, that it was extremely helpful having the director of the DPW along at our walk as well, provide some context, and just also the timing of when the crosswalks, for instance, are restripped. And that was, you know, why we really would like to see some greater visibility with some of the signage, where it's inevitable that crosswalks are going to wear away. It's just, it's where we live, and that just happens, but where they're likely to really, you know, rub away, can we get some additional signage just to draw attention to that area?
Anything on the council on that? A lot of the things tie right into the next, the traffic study that NVDA did with StanTech. And I know that... Want to come right up? Yeah. I know the whole Maple Fields was quite a discussion at the public hearing.
Yes.
So... I'll let you give a roll of you.
Do you want us to stay up here?
If you want. That way it kind of all ties together.
Absolutely, I just wanted to share.
Yep.
So just for those that don't know, Doug Morton from NVDA, and we did an intersection study over the summer, and there was a lot of sort of overlap in some of the areas we looked at, and some of the recommendations that were made. As far as the Maple Fields, Third Street, Main Street, School Street intersection, that was one of our intersections that we looked at in Second and Field, and then Garden Park and College Way. And I just, my goal for tonight is really just to sort of cap or finish off that effort and really ask for the council's blessing or for your formal acceptance of that study. So, make sure that I get that out early in the discussion. We did have two public hearings on that study, and during the course of that effort to gain public input, and I feel like we got some really good comments from the public. And so, again, my goal tonight is to really answer any questions you have about the formal study, the final study, that I believe you have had some time to review and digest, and if you have any questions, that's why I'm here tonight. The Maple Fields at Third and Main, our recommendation was for a two-way stop, and so we were looking at throughput, you know, for all users, sort of our purpose and need statement that we settled on in this room, was really to look at, you know, for all users of the network. And so, not wanting to create a backup and sort of being cognizant of the concerns of police department, public works, trying to make that a more standard approach for folks and more predictable. I think the way it is now is seen as perhaps unpredictable, certainly, to folks from out of the area, that it is a free flow going west, and so to create more predictability to create a two-way stop. So, but it is, of course, your road, and I guess if I would back up a little bit and ask, you know, for comments, or just, in asking you to accept this study, I'm not asking you to take it as unchangeable, or as anything that has a certain timeline for implementation. The goal of asking for your formal acceptance, or, I don't know, you can word it any way you want to, really, is to sort of the blessing of the study by the city council, would allow it to have a little bit stronger weight, should you choose to go for any grant funding, using that document as a support for those requests. So, one of the things that was discussed was rapid flashing rectangular beacons at the intersection right out here to assist pedestrian crossing, and those are a little pricey, and I want to say they're $14,000 apiece, is the estimate that's been given.
Is that the solar-powered one or the non-solar?
That's the solar-powered one.
If we had electricity.
There are different, absolutely, there are different variations of them, but they're still, they're costly, and those are fundable through the Vermont Bike and Ped Grant Program, it's an 80/20 match, and to be able to say that this was an outcome of a feasibility study that was supported by the city council would make for a strong application. That's just one example.
Now, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. The recommendation for the two-way stop, would you recommend, I don't remember what you recommended, I'm trying to figure out, look at the map here and try to refresh my memory.
So if you were heading out of the city, heading west, so where you currently would make a left on the Third Street, that intersection, that approach would be, is now free-flowing, and that would go to a stop, remain a stop. Correct.
The stop signs would go away. Third and Second, Third and School Street would go away.
What are you looking at?
This map here.
Is that part of the report?
Yes.
Look on page 73.
73?
Yeah, if you look on that. I think you're looking at the existing conditions, so this...
Okay. That one, okay, that's what I was trying to... I just wanted to, I had on my computer, because I left a pretty good one up here.
Yeah, thanks.
And it has a number of other attributes, so extending curbs would reduce the travel time for pedestrians. You could include flashing beacons at that intersection for those pedestrian crossings. There's any number of sort of permutations you could make. That was the base recommendation that we came up with. And again, you're not limited to that by blessing the study. I don't think you're required to go back and rehash it formally.
But I think accepting it for the purposes of future grant funding makes a lot of sense. And we had met as a team before making this presentation with our police department and our public works, and all of us, well, Mayor, you were here for that, weren't you?
Yep.
Okay. And we brainstormed to see what we could make realistic, big impact, little budget.
Right.
And the things that we believe that we can do is extend the stoplight to the 19 seconds. Our challenge is going to be finding the right professional who can come in and do it, and we, there's one company in the state that does it, so we're kind of at their mercy, but we did let you know that we were going to make an effort to have that happen. And the park benches we talked about, and you're going to let us know what luck you have with the merchants. And I think we, on that side of Main Street, we actually talked to a couple of merchants, and as we're repaving, we'll be putting in some of the infrastructure to allow the benches, so that'll be a spring project, just so people are realistic. And we wanted to coordinate these two reports at the same time for efficiency, and it seemed like we could get more coordinated, and it's worked beautifully, which is why you're here at the same time presenting these findings. We intend to file a grant for those flashing beacons, and that's, I haven't gotten my head wrapped around that yet.
That comes up in the spring.
So that's going to be something that we do, and we may have some other funding opportunities to complement that as well.
Excellent.
And so, we do intend to move that forward. Obviously, there's going to be a delay from the time we file the grant, we hear back, we do the installation, and there's a lot that has to happen, but we thought the findings were reasonable, and we, what our team also believed is that what was recommended in this StanTech project was reasonable, that doesn't say that it's not inexpensive. So the whole capital investment plan, we can incorporate that into our next rendition of the plan, but everything, you know, it's on a timeframe, because we have obligations in our capital investment plan that we have been there for a long time, we haven't been able to meet for a variety of reasons. So we want to be realistic in what we promise to the community at the same time. At the same time, we do think there are some things in there that we can achieve. So I concur with Doug's request for the council to formally accept these because we'll use that in our future grant applications.
Now downtown transportation funds, could that be used for some of this?
Very possibly.
I'm thinking the grant you're speaking of is through ACCD and it's a planning study. So if you have further planning to do...
I thought the St. Albans used that to fund some of their infrastructure, like go towards some of the benches towards... I don't know, we can look into it because I thought from my conversation, they use some of that funding from some of their...
Confusing that with the Better Communities Grant.
Maybe that's what it was. It might have been Better Communities, that'd be, yeah.
Changing grant names over years. Saints or a different name.
Right. Just want to throw out another funding source that is available is the National Realtors Association also has funding available for improvements to downtown areas as well. So you have your local Realtors, you know, chapter sponsor that application. And they range from, I want to say like a couple thousand all the way up to fifteen thousand dollars. And they're pretty straightforward grants. And it's about a month turnaround, but it's a rolling basis. So they start the new at the beginning of the year. Just as something else to put on your radar.
Just, I don't think I heard correctly, or maybe I did and I didn't understand it. For Third and Main, are we talking about a four-way stop? Or I don't understand what a two-way stop is. So I was kind of back and forth, so I didn't get it.
Can you send me that electronically? Right now, is it a three-way stop?
Is it on your website?
Yes.
It's reported, yes. Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
I have no problem voting to approve your study for the next council meeting. But nowhere in here does it say we were going to vote on the study. Just a briefing. And obviously if, you know, I can look on the computer. But had I realized that you wanted a vote, I would have had it in front of me right now. So I would have asked, we defer this to the next council meeting.
No, I was planning on having it on the next agenda.
Because when you asked for that, I said, this is not part of...
Certainly.
Okay?
Whatever sign you need.
No, I was planning on...
And if there's any questions in the interim that come up as you're reviewing it, I'm happy to...
No, I wasn't going to have any vote tonight because I assumed this was just a briefing.
Well, no, I knew you'd asked for us to approve it.
Right.
And I said, no, if it's on here, approval and vote, then...
My apologies if I said that confusingly.
No, I wasn't confused.
When would be the last time that you would have? Or by what date, I'm sorry, deadline then to accept this?
You really don't have one? I will propose one. It's really on your schedule if you have questions, if you have concerns?
By the order of getting some of the grants or supply for some of the grants will be in the spring.
So the Bike and Ped Grant is coming in the spring. It won't really even be announced, I think, until April. So sometime, you know, probably will be due in May, maybe in June, early June. So at that point, we would, if we wanted to reference that the council had adopted these recommendations, that would be the time.
No, I was thinking having this on the next agenda, I mean, the next meeting agenda. That way it's still fresh in people's minds and get a chance to review some more.
And just as background for your reference, we've helped communities use some of the language and studies that we've done over time and encourage them to pick the pieces that best suit their needs at the time. So when we look at a piece of infrastructure, whether it's corridor or an intersection, interstate interchange, right? Whatever is needed at the moment out of that study is what we'll work with. So you don't have to take the entire thing and make that one application.
It's going to take a lot to change the thinking of Main and Third with the stop. Because coming up Main that way, I don't think they've ever had a stop that way. They did one time and it came out.
They tried it once.
They tried it.
Few days and it didn't, it didn't turn her off.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I'm thinking the two-way stop means going and coming on Main, there's no stop. And then if you're coming Third and School, it's a stop.
You would stop on School and you would stop on Third, approaching Main. On Main, you would have free, you would, am I saying that right? No, you would stop.
You're right.
You would stop on Main.
Yeah.
So it's just removing the one-stop sign.
Removing the one-stop sign and perhaps moving that way. That, right. Because I have seen mornings, school mornings where it's backed up from the old age main. It's right straight up, almost as far as the funeral home, right there.
It's going to be anyways because as soon as he puts that light on and says stop and the kids are getting on, traffic's just going to...
Okay. All right, anything else then? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I think it's great that they both, both studies tie right into each other. Actually, just good timing for the thing. Thank you.
Try carefully, Billy.
Yes, try carefully, Billy. Okay. Moving on, the next item, excuse me, monument bench placement.
All right, I guess I'm getting this thrown on me because I was the one that stirred it up. We had a family that wanted to donate some money anonymously to the city to put up some park benches. One over in Pomelo Park, looking up at the lake with a writing, "Enjoy the lake." And then another one over in Gardner Park near the monument for my Vietnam brothers. Great. They want to pay for it. Family wanted to remain anonymous. And we started going forward. And then I said, well, hold on, you just can't, anywhere else we've ever put any benches up in the city or anything like that, we have to have a council approval. And I said, well, they want to remain anonymous. They can remain anonymous, but we still have to approve the placement and where the benches would go. And then he's thrown a little bit of the anonymous out the door because the one that he's proposing for Gardner Park would say, "For my Vietnam brothers," and his name underneath it. But, but we're prepared to go forward and he's willing to, you know, he wants to put his name on that bench now. But as I said, we set a precedence, any type of park benches, we've done it over by the, because he...
The bench stand.
Benge's there. And any other type benches, we've always had to have the council so approve it. So I guess we, the council is aware of where the benches are, right? Or I just told you?
Yes.
And just to make it a formality, because I believe the base is already in. So I would make a motion that as a council, we go ahead and approve the placement of the two park benches. It said one's in Gardner Park by the monument. And the other one is right on the lake, looking up at the lake with the engrave, "Enjoy the lake." So I make a motion that we make this legal and approve the placement of the monuments, the benches.
The benches, most made, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Maybe seconded, maybe by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Boyd. Discussion?
What was the material of the benches, some curiosity?
It's pure granite.
They're all granite, yes.
Yeah. Anything else? Then all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is proposal for brokerage... What?
Now they can finish.
Oh, now they can finish, yes. The next item is proposal for brokerage services for benefits, Jack, over there.
The folks? Interesting, this side of the table. I understand you did receive my proposal that I put together. What brought this on is, as you all know, I did help negotiate the work contract event as a insurance professional, they explained the plan to them. And a lot of the event, a lot of the questions that the union had or the members had, and some of the issues that went through could have been resolved had it been a broker involved. City manager did what she could, but obviously she does not understand insurance and doesn't, shouldn't need to anyway. And that's what brought my idea, you know, you need somebody locally that can help the union members or help all your employees when there's some issue with either the claims or... And in that particular case, it was a pretty heavy claim that went on being paid. There was some misinformation that was given to some of the guys specifically on prescriptions. They were paying more than what they should have had. And that's kind of certain side, but I'm willing to offer not only for your medical insurance, I don't know, for public work, but also for the PD as well. Because now they're going to have the same plan. The whole, the whole city have all the same plan. But I'm also willing, since I was the one that during the PD negotiation had proposed and put together a package with a negotiating team to do short-term and long-term and life insurance. And that would be included also, which anybody else that's going to do that would probably just be doing, like I know the LCT does, they do some brokerage firm, there's some brokerage stuff, but they do it through a firm out of Burlington. But they would not, they would only do the medical part. They would not do the short-term and long-term. And what I would do for you, not only will I help them out, but if you had a new employee, I would enroll them. I would pretty much take it all away from the city manager. I would do all the enrolling and disenrolling. If somebody was leaving, I would disenroll them. If somebody's turning sixty-five, I would enroll them into the Medicare plans, which I administer for you guys now anyway. You've got a couple of employees that are on Medicare that I administer anyway. That would all be included in the package. It'd be all-inclusive for all of your, all your medical, all of your insurance benefits that you offer your employees. Starting, and I would actually include what I've been asked to do already, which I've got to do this month, is the enrollment of the Public Works into the new plan. They were staying with the same company, but I got to enroll them all. I got to be with them all and do an enrollment change form with a lot of them. And also explain the whole plan. The new plan is just completely different than what they're accustomed to, to all the total members. And I'm also on the, going to meet with a PD because their plan has changed and been some tweaks to it that they need to know about as well. All of that, all those services are going to be included going forward.
Any questions? Yes, in my mind. So we're looking at twenty dollars per month per employee who's enrolled in the insurance.
In the medical plan, yes.
The medical plan.
Yeah. Yeah, that would not include the Medicare supplement plans. It'd be just the ones that are in the medical plans. If they're not on your medical plan, they're not included. I would still have them, obviously, but they're not included in that fee. Like if you have some employees that are just on short-term or long-term, like some of the PD, I would still, obviously, that would be included, but it would not be a fee for that part for them. And that includes union and the union. That would be everybody that's in the plan. And the fee is actually set by the state. If you, if this was given to you, well, it's not set by PD, it's set by the state for small groups. The reason why NVDA can charge a little less because they use on a large group basis.
I mean, V L C T.
I mean, V L C T.
I was going to say NVDA.
They just slap.
Too many acronyms.
They base it on a large group fee, which is wide open. And if you remember years ago, when I took to see the other large group because of the way the fees, the premiums are, you don't want to go back in that boat. Because then when you become a large group, if something happens in Burlington, in your next premium increase will reflect that. Staying in a small group is where you want to be. Because you're, because actually the premiums there are controlled by the state, not by the group.
Okay, no, no, that was my thing, was the cost per...
Okay, but going back to that cost, it does say in item number three here that it could contain a monthly fee that differs from the default monthly fee of twenty dollars.
What they're saying there is I could actually charge an hourly fee instead. And those you would run about an hour and a half an hour.
Okay.
You don't want to do that either.
Right. So getting back to the other questions. You said that V L T C was administering the medical plan, but not the life insurance?
Not the life insurance, no. No, no, because they use a company called Hickok and Boardman of Burlington. And they're not going to come in and administer a fee they're not giving them. They're not going to come over and administer something like that, a commission.
And you would be doing both under that twenty...
Yes, I would do all of those benefits under that one.
And how many employees do we have or potentially would be enrolled in that?
About thirty-two. So you do your...
I have it high then.
It's approximately thirty-two. We have some people that are on a medical insurance plan.
Okay.
I think if you base it on thirty-two, I got six hundred and eighty a month times twelve, that's eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars a year. We'd get more precision when we have...
Right.
Thirty-two times twenty, six hundred and forty a month.
How many are eligible?
About thirty-two.
Seven thousand six hundred and eighty.
So nobody's declining currently?
No, we do have some people who are down in medical insurance.
We have one of about thirty-nine or forty-one.
We have thirty-nine.
That's what I was basing it on, but I forgot.
Now, we have some people that are down.
Can you come up with what figure?
I came up with about eighty-one hundred dollars a year. What'd you come up with?
Seven, six, eight, nine, twelve? Yeah, that's thirty-two times the exact number of employees.
Yeah.
And that would start until January one anyway. That would be January one to start on.
And just so you know, as part of our contract negotiations with the Public Works, we agreed to have Jack come in and sign up the Public Works employees anyway at the contract agreement. So that was part of that contract negotiation, which I'm happy to do. Because Jack is right, he has a specialty and a lot of the staff know you anyway. So that actually worked out to our advantage.
Any other questions?
Okay, so I think it's already been stated that there are no other companies that would be able to do this with the exception of Hickok and Boardman and their over in Burlington.
No, it would end up being a very similar brokerage contract with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And right now, our insurance is bought directly through NVDA.
Is directly through NVDA.
So we don't do any brokerage services with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Vermont League of Cities and Towns covers our passive insurance, which is our property and casualty and liability. That's, they do great, I'm not touching that.
So we deal directly with insurance companies?
We deal directly with...
Yeah. Go right on the system.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Having been a benefits administrator in the past, I'm really surprised to hear that we're dealing directly with insurance companies.
Small groups will be due, especially now that they, since the legislators passed the ruling where the insurance company no longer pays the agents or the brokers. The commissions are all gone. That's when they shifted it to having the clients pay for it, which I disagreed with a hundred percent for a couple of reasons. But we were paid a lot more by the insurance company than we were being paid now, but we're not charged. I guess the legislator thought we were making too much money. And they were concerned because they thought we had, might have an affiliation with one company over another, which we didn't. And I'm an independent broker, my work was...
My question is, is this something that we're going to put out to bid, to have a broker?
I don't know of any other company around here, who does it?
There, I've heard, I'm getting pretty much, I mean, only up here now doing medical insurance, there's only, there's one other company that, and he does only his own clients, and that's Isabel over on East Main Street. Associated used to do it, but they sold out and Bill, the guy that did it, retired. Not much of us, nobody wants to work for twenty bucks a person, twenty bucks a month.
I certainly appreciate wanting to shop local, but much like legal, I mean, this is... is a very delicate specialty that I don't think we necessarily have to shop only locally. There are brokers all over the state who might be interested in administering these products. And I think we should give other people the benefit of...
That's a council decision, but your policy for purchases doesn't require you to go to bid or not in this ballpark. So I mean, that's a council decision.
Yeah, they're all going to charge, I know a lot of the, around the state, being in the business a lot, they all charge twenty, we all charge twenty dollars a month, unless you're dealing with a large group. And that's in a small group, anything under a hundred, a small group now.
What's the timeframe? So if we did go out to ask for RFP, RFP, I have a question, RFP, what's the timeframe? Because this brokerage service, you said when's started, January?
And when's started, January?
Right, and now's the opening roll.
Opening roll is now. And what I will do, if I know you're going to be doing it, because I think we had agreed on this on an hourly fee, if I don't have a brokerage, before this even came out, I would, I'm always scheduled for, to meet with the guys on the sixteenth to do the enrollment, to get that part done. If you guys agree to put me on the broker, I won't charge you for the brokerage fee that we had agreed on. If you, when it comes to consultant fee, if you vote, if you don't vote, if you decide you want to hire somebody else, obviously, I will bill you my other consultant fee that we had agreed on, to do what I'm going to do on the sixteenth. That's going to take a better part of the day to get everybody enrolled and meet with PD and meet with all of the employees. But if you decide that you're going to, that you're going to hire me as your broker, that will go, I'm going to get it done for the first, but don't go away. You will not see, and I bill either quarterly or monthly, depending on, I could do quarterly if it was anyone else. So you will not see a bill from me until, and it would not include the four or five hours, whatever I'm going to do on the sixteenth. That would be, it would be included in the twenty dollars when you get that.
Well, I know that's something we weren't going to vote on tonight.
Right, I understand.
Just a presentation, so we weren't going to do any time of vote on this.
I understood that.
So...
But I, just to clarify a little bit, the local thing, when I was your broker, back before the ACA came, the guys who were stuck at my office, they had any issues, they would give me a call, meet with them, whatever they did, and they really appreciated that. And they solved a lot of problems before John ever even saw them. And if they, the situation would be the same, if they, if they had an issue, they could just give me a call, I'm going to get them down, they could stop by my office, which is actually my house. They all know where I live, and I would take care of a problem like I used to five, six, about six years ago now. Okay? Any other questions or...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We could probably have this on the next agenda. Yeah, we should have this on the next agenda, we're going to decide that.
Should you ask?
Well, we can discuss and see if we want to... So, what's this, oh, this is the next item, original. For the next agenda item, for this insurance, Mr. Robers, we could have this as an agenda item.
You can, you can also...
At that time.
Yeah.
We can decide whether we want RFP or decide on services. That would be the type of discussion that we would have. It could be either or.
You can also decide whether or not you want to include it in the next round of budget.
Right, it could be.
So we've got a couple of different options.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay. We'll move on. So you have that on the, you've made a note for the next agenda on that?
I'm using this highlighter.
Oh.
To the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item is USDA grant application authorization vote, and we have Jamie LaClaire, the fire chief, would you like to give us an overview of the grant you are applying for?
Actually, the city manager emailed me the paperwork, and we're going to try to apply for it, it's a thirty thousand dollar grant. We need to replace some much-needed home for here. A good guy's that are in here that dates back to the late eighties. And with the number one cause of firefighting death right now, cancer, because carcinogens going through the outdated here, we want to be on top of the game. So would like your permission to apply for that grant. The deadline is the eighth. We did apply for the F G grants. We made it to the last round, and then were denied. So we made it to the computer phase, and there was like nineteen rounds, and we had letters of support from Leahy's office, Sanders, Walsh, and as a mayor knows, we got declined, so. And we'll reapply when that comes back out as well, so.
Chief, is there a reason why you're always being declined for those grants? I mean, obviously, it's stuff that you do need.
It's, one, it's the area. I mean, there's a lot of, you look at the grants, and a lot of your career departments, Boston, New York, Chicago, Detroit, all those guys seem to be getting them, a lot of the career departments are getting them, and they're running off, you know, almost million-dollar budgets.
But a lot of the small, a lot of the small departments in Vermont are getting them, and that's what concerns me.
There's only three small departments in the state that got them, but I understand we were asking...
Last chance three small ones got them too. It's like they seem to be going everywhere else, but...
Look at the amount that they're asking for. You know, they're asking seventeen thousand dollars, you know, the highest one was seventy thousand. I'm asking for over three hundred thousand dollars. You know, we need air packs, we need gear, you know. I don't want to know the taxpayers, because I don't want to keep the budget low, but it's one of those things that if we go for a lower grant, more likely we'll probably get it, we may get it, may not get it. You know, you've got forty-seven thousand plus fire departments in the U.S., you know, anywhere from half to two-thirds are applying for grants, you know. It's a crapshoot, whatever you agree. So we made it to the last round, which is the first we've ever made it. The last F G grant we cut was back in two thousand four, so.
You said that particular grant was how much?
Thirty thousand, it's a fifty-fifty, I believe.
Jamie, oftentimes, grant reviewers will give you a reason, like a report card on your grant application, to tell you why you weren't approved. Have you had that experience where anybody's giving you feedback that might give you a better application?
They didn't have testimonials on that, but for the people that didn't make it pass the computer process, not for the people that made it to panel. So I do have the opportunity, when the F G does come out again, to have a, it's called Grant USA, the offer to read to the whole grant for free. And then give us pointers, normally they charge six hundred and fifty dollars for it, so I'm going to take them up on that, so. And we could hire those guys to do our grant for us and spend fifteen hundred dollars, but we're still going to guarantee the grant. So why spend fifteen hundred dollars and possibly not get it, and, you know, so we'll still pick way at that.
Good. Okay, so we would need a motion to authorize the USDA grant application.
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have a question about the process of looking at grant applications and the council's approval. It seems, if I recall, in years past, I think all grants were run by the council, not necessarily for permission to apply, but just to keep the council informed of grant applications that are in progress. And I'm wondering where that stands? It seems like there's grants being granted that we don't know about until there's equipment out.
We try to be as aggressive as we can when it comes to grants, and we've had a pretty good track record, trying to keep the council informed. The USDA requires authorization, we have to fill that out, send a copy of the agenda and the minutes confirming, so...
Would it be problematic to inform the council?
Not at all.
That would be great.
Normally, the grant ones that come before the council are the ones that would require a match from the city. If it doesn't require a match from the city, they don't always come before the council.
Sometimes there's tight deadlines too.
It could be informative.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, budget schedule proposal.
It's that time of year, and the department heads and the city treasurer, my office, we've been working hard, putting together a budget, pretty bare bones, but nevertheless, it's a budget. And what we've done in the past is, previous boards have found it very challenging to get your head wrapped around a budget when you have other agenda items included, unless it was something very quick and simple, because the budget process has historically taken a lot of work and a lot of brain power. So we are just about ready to present the first draft of our budget, and I wanted to find out what the council's preferences regarding how you want to proceed. What's the easiest thing for you? If you did it on, if you held special meetings, it's conceivable that the first meeting would be November thirteenth, that is an off week. The next meeting would be November twenty-seventh, which is an off week from a regular meeting. You've got a regular meeting scheduled December fourth, so December eleventh. I mean, that's assuming you would choose Mondays, there was that option as well. But it seems like we want to get started. So what's your thinking about that?
Well, Mondays, if we're doing it on a Monday, that's better, because I know Thursdays are pretty much devoted to the Board of Civil Authority right through January, correct?
Mr. Johnson?
Right to the first of February.
Right to the first of February. Thursdays are devoted to the BCA for the tax appeals.
Well, you've got to have your budget confirmed to know that you're done.
I've got to handle that thing, but, you know, January is the latest.
Our track record is that we usually finish it up by the first weekend of January.
Because we have to have it to the printer by the, pretty much the end of January, because that's coming, you know, because we have to have that book done.
You don't like cutting it off.
What's the council's...
If it's done by the first of January, that's a great one.
Yeah. So what's the council's thoughts of off-week Mondays? Six-thirty?
Actually, you can make it, you can do it even earlier, you can start at six, you know, earlier in the day.
And then come, you know, six. Six-thirty is the earliest summer of the year.
Okay.
Want to do the off months.
Yeah, we'll do the first two off Mondays, and then we'll see what happens for December.
Yeah. So we'll plan on...
Mondays is a good night.
So that would be, the first one would be November thirteenth?
For the week for tonight.
For the budget only.
Yep. Your next one would be November twenty-seventh. It's going to be some bare bones, you might be able to do it quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, good.
All right, the next item is anticipated executive session for a real estate purchase or lease options. Title one, VSA three thirteen, section A two, and we would need a motion for an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that because of specific findings by the board, the premature general public knowledge of the subject of the anticipated executive session tonight would clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage.
So a motion's been made, is there a second? Made and seconded, discussion, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Tom's going to join us.
Tom will join us for that one.
Mr. Mayor, just pro forma, are you expecting to come out of this executive session and vote to do something?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And are you doing another executive session afterwards, or I can't recall now? I'm not looking at the agenda.
Yeah, discuss a contract.
And will there be something out of that one?
I doubt it.
Go ahead.
I know we've already read the motion. Why couldn't we have done new business, old business first?
Exactly.
In case they have business.
Right.
And then we go into our executive sessions.
Oh.
Thank you, John.
Oh, we dropped a second. It's an oversight on my part.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. It's an oversight on my part on the agenda.
I hadn't noticed it.
You hadn't noticed until now either. Yeah, it was an oversight, you're right. I'm just going down, I'm just going down the agenda. Okay, new business, Mr. Johnson. Everything's good, John. So, Mr. Johnson, new business.
We can get you out of work tomorrow.
Anything else? Oh, gee. That's something we have there.
I'll show John down there. John will figure it out. Got a liquor license application for Walgreens, Walgreen Eastern Company. They're getting these in early, they'll take effect for the third of January, they need to get them down there. They're taking over Ray Day Gold Plaza, so we need to approve that license. Ray Day's already got one, this is just for a different company.
Right.
So the application's in there, if they ever were to sign.
Yeah, they bought them right there. Mr. Johnson, are you sure you included it? Oh, here it is. I didn't go over here. Anything else, new business?
That's it.
Mr. Wilson?
Just as a matter of curiosity, is there a date on that that indicates when the change is going to take?
No, all they've put in here, they need this effective January thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't know when the, I don't know anything about the rest of it. New business now.
Anything, anything? New business?
Yes, I would like, please go ahead now. I'd like to extend a great thanks to Pedro and everyone down at the water department for, they took me and a number of representatives from the Water Association on a very thorough and extremely informative tour of the whole facility. And I would just like to express a very significant gratitude and appreciation for our exceptional, really, professional water department. and appreciation for our exceptional, really professional water department.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
No, I asked for an alibi on new business. I would like to know when and heck we are going to have the Veterans Day ceremony here at City Hall. And always in the past, the request for the gym and the request for anything has come to the council. People are asking me, and I'm sitting out there like, I have no idea when this is happening. Is it Friday or is it Saturday?
Do you know?
Rick Kelly's been in to see me twice, and they don't even know what happened today.
Right.
I had an obscure email.
On Friday, they didn't know whether it was Friday or Saturday, so I don't, I haven't heard anything today, so I don't know what.
I don't know either.
I mean, it's going to be horrible someday when we thought, I said, no, you can't use our facilities because you can't get your paperwork in.
It's not a reflection of the city.
It's really not impressive.
No, we've been standing at the ready. We've made some overtures to try to figure it out. The disconnect seems to be between Mr. Kelly and Mr. Young.
I had an email from Jeff Young from the VFW, and I almost didn't get it because it went, for some reason, I went right to my spam folder. I'm not sure why, but it says, he's the commander at the VFW, and we'll look to see if we can hold it again, hold it again this year. I had to read the head, the, I had to read the topic to see what he was talking about. And then he put, he typed it on his iPhone, so it didn't type very well. Let me see. He wanted to hold it again this year in the gym, the Newport offices, November tenth, ten a.m. Should be done by noon. Also, would like to know if I want to speak. So I forwarded that to the city manager and to the recreation director.
But always, the legion does it. They come before the council and say, request permission. And I know your mayor, Flaver, is not around right now, bail him out. But this is not. That's the problem. When'd you get that email?
I forwarded it.
Last week, there is.
I think it was last week I got it. Yes, it was last week, because then I sent it off.
So my question's been answered.
The rule is going to be set up for Friday.
Yeah, we're setting it up, just in case they have it Friday or Saturday. It'll all be set up for both days.
So we're doing everything we can with the information that we've got.
Okay, thank you.
I know, John, if I hadn't seen that, it would have been.
I know, it's, okay.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, as to the special meetings, could you reach an agreement with the local television station that they be recorded so that people will be able to see the budget meetings on television?
We leave it up to NEK TV, they generally come to all of our meetings. And so it's, it's up to NEK TV if they so choose to come to the meeting. We can't force them to come to the meeting.
Can we extend a formal invitation?
Well, they're invited to any council meeting, you know, it's common.
A specific invitation, I guess, would be, might be appreciated. So that's just what they know about.
It's up to their schedule, I mean. He's here. It'll be a one meeting and.
They know when the meetings are, like everybody else does. Yeah, but we, we pay them to come for the.
I don't think they've submitted an invoice. I don't think these guys have submitted an invoice for a very long time.
Okay.
Did they have submitted an invoice?
No, because it's been under the words, John. We were going to, and then they decided not to.
Okay, that's nice of them.
Yep.
It is nice.
So, okay. All right, any old business?
Do we all leave now?
Yes. Old business, Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Morgan? Anything? Okay, now we need the motion for an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that because of specific findings by the board, that premature general public knowledge of the subject of the anticipated executive session tonight would clearly place the board and people involved at a substantial disadvantage, and would that be moved into executive session.
Motion made, is there a second? Made and seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carries.
You have two executive sessions, I think. You need to do both of them.
Go open the door after the first one, make a motion to go in second.
Okay.
That's how we've done it before.
Okay.